City of Palatka Commission Meeting for May 28, 2015. We're gonna have our invocation by the Reverend Chad Perry, pastor of the River Community Church. Pastor Perry, we ask you to do the invocation and also the pledge for us, so we'd ask everyone to stand at this time.
Let's pray together. Father God, we love you and we thank you for your love for us and how you pursue us with that love. We thank you for the opportunity to live in Palatka. What a blessing. And Father, there are some decisions to be made tonight, also some celebration. Help us to rejoice in the things we need to rejoice in, give us wisdom in the areas we need to make decisions in. And Father, when there's even a time to be sad with our brothers and sisters, help us to comfort them and shed a tear with them. We're thankful, Lord, that it's about you. Help us to be good stewards of your place called Palatka. In the precious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Borum?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
All members of present and cabinet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the minutes from the May 14 meeting and also from our May 18 interviews? We got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Borum. We'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now move on to our special public recognitions and presentations. I ask that Nina Rojas and Seth Torres come forward at this time. Is Seth here?
Thank you, sir.
Come on over here, Nina. We've got a special presentation for you, and this is from our Palatka Pride Cleanup. And it says, "In grateful recognition of your civic and community activism, advocacy for the Palatka Pride Cleanup effort, and the spirit of volunteerism for the betterment of the greater Palatka area awarded this 28th day of May of 2015, Carroll Hill Mayor, Betsy Drieger's Clerk, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Borum, and James Norwood." And we want to thank you for your service, your great job, and I want you to remember what you said before. I want you to, you wanna say something to everyone? I'm gonna give you a chance. This young lady gave the one of the most inspiring speeches that you ever want to see. We've got Seth coming up as well. And come on up, Seth. So I'm gonna let Nina say something right quick.
Thank you for inviting me to the Palatka cleanup. And thank you, Mr. Rufus, for being my friend.
Thank you very much.
This is another one of our young people who had an inspiring word for us, and he talked to us about the importance of keeping our communities clean. And this is Seth Torres, and it says, "In grateful recognition for your civic and community activism, advocacy for the Palatka Pride Cleanup effort, and spirit of volunteerism for the betterment of greater Palatka awarded this 28th day of May, 2015." Thank you, Seth.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and supporting.
It's always special when we see young people giving back to their community and doing it with pride. You know, if you missed a treat during the Palatka Pride Cleanup, an opportunity to start at the riverfront and finish on College Road, we had approximately 100 citizens come out, different organizations and churches, everyone band together to try to make Palatka a better place, and that's what it's all about. And these young folks were really the trigger of our day, just coming out and having them give us words of encouragement. So that's the future of our Palatka, and I'm proud of that. So, we're also, we're gonna take this time, we're gonna go ahead and do our public recognition and presentations for our Student of the Month. And we're gonna ask Commissioner Norwood to join me on this, to help me with the presentations. So we're gonna take one student out of order, and we're gonna ask that the representative from the school come up with a student as well, and we'll, once we're finished, we'll have the students remain, we'll take pictures as a group for the newspaper, and then we'll take individual pictures for anybody, any family members that wanna take pictures as well. So what we're gonna do at this time is we're gonna recognize, I wanna start out first and recognize parents, and I think that the parents and the family members play an important part in what we do, and I want all of my parents to at least stand up, wave your hand if you can't stand right now, parents, grandparents. If you stand up, it's because of your support, it's because of your support and the discipline that you instill in your children and grandchildren, and letting them know just how important it is to have an education and to act and to behave favorably while they're in school, that these children sit here today. And we wanna thank you for it and commend you for your efforts. And at this time, we're gonna start our special recognitions, and I guess this is my third opportunity to take the privilege of awarding Student of the Month to one of my nieces, to my niece or nephew, I have my twin nephews up here before, so we're gonna call from Palatka High School, John L. Williams. And we're gonna excuse her, we're gonna excuse her early, she has senior award tonight. Next, we have from Browning Pierce Elementary School, Kendall Cheeto. From the Children's Reading Center Charter School, Jalen Moore. From E.H. Miller, Malin Sarazar Barrientos. From Jenkins Middle School, Jarrett Tiana Milton. From Kelly Smith Elementary School, Willow Skipmore. From Mellon Elementary, Makai Petty-John. From Pennile Baptist Academy, Michaela Heine. From the Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences Incorporated, Heather Schmidt. Last but not least, from Putnam Mansion High School, Jasmine Martinez. And we always like to leave you guys with a word of encouragement that simply says, "I am somebody. My mind can conceive it, and my heart can believe it. I know I can achieve it, because I am somebody." Each of you standing here today, you're somebody, you're gonna be something great in life, and just continue to work hard and do things that you're doing right now. And we thank you for your time, we thank you for your, we thank you for your efforts. Congratulations again on being Student of the Month.
Hey, ma'am, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the only little female here, but tonight, I'm very proud to say, women just slammed up.
He speechless.
I was not looking over the gentleman here, but I was saying that we outnumbered with women.
We're gonna ask, we're gonna ask all our students to come together, we're gonna take a photo right here, and we're gonna ask our school reps to step aside just for a moment. We wanna, we wanna give a round of applause to all our educators who are here today. So we're gonna ask you. Mr. Brown, you can't stick around, you can take a good picture. Not over your face. Hey, I pay a lot for these races, y'all smile with me. I can do this one from right here, but I'm gonna move down a little bit. Mr. Bush, will you follow me? Mrs. Bush, come forward. This award goes to somebody who is completely dedicated to this community, to this city. When we were without a city manager, I made a phone call, and without hesitation, he came. I don't know if he knew what he was getting into, but he came. And I'll say he was semi-retired, he was fully retired, and we asked him to come back and to lend a hand and help us with the selection process and to help us kinda keep the ship going, as we got ourselves prepared for change. And Alan Bush is someone that I never really knew beforehand, I was always on the other side of cases with Mr. Bush, but I got an opportunity over these last couple months to really get a chance to know the man Alan Bush and to realize just how dedicated he is to the city, just how hardworking he is, and just how much he cares about people. And so, Mr. Bush, we wanna thank you for the time that you spent with us, for coming out of retirement, for hasting back to retirement, but we also, we wanna thank you for your commitment to the city, and we wanna present you with this key to the city as a token of our appreciation for all that you've done for us. We know that you like the great outdoors, so we've got, we've got a low certificate for you, because I'm sure your honey-do list is built up while you're gone, and we've got a fast pro shop certificate for you, so.
I appreciate that very much.
So we thank you, and we thank you for lending into us again in our retirement and during the time of your vacation, and so, you have any words, any words for us?
Yeah, let me say that it's been a privilege to come back and work with the city. I've been out seven years, coming back, getting my things, but I've actually enjoyed it. I really have, and it's a great bunch of people to work with. I know it was a short tenure, it was hard to get a lot done, but we did what we could, and again, I've enjoyed working with every one of you. If I can, I'd like to shake your hand.
Oh, we're gonna come down.
Can we take a picture with you, sir?
You can.
Can we?
Sure.
I wanna thank his wife, 'cause she done put up with all the crap of us in there.
And I wanna give a round of applause to Mrs. Bush, because without her, this would Can we get all the city staff members present to come up and take a picture with us?
Anybody, anybody who's in the class probably need to put their heart.
I want you guys in the middle, right here.
In the middle?
We gotta squeeze it in. Step up front, and then we'll, we'll take them back. Matt Reynolds definitely has to be on the ground, bro. Can you see him, Mike? Can you see Matt?
I can.
He's on the step ladder.
Cheeseburger.
Money.
Just say retire.
Retirement's a magic word.
We'd like for you to send us a picture if you would. I told Krista to.
And this time, we're gonna try to let you stay retired.
Except you could come back and work with me more, Wes, if you wanted to.
I just got a plant, a plant I can't get out of.
Before we, before we, we're gonna take one item, we're gonna take one item out of order so that Mr. Bush can hasten to his retirement again. We're gonna take item number 10 on the agenda, which is the city manager administrative report, an administrative report, and we'll take Mr. Bush's report out of order.
Yesterday, I sat down with Mr. Suggs, the city manager-to-be, I guess for lack of a better term, and we went over an employment agreement, we both came to a mutual consensus on something that we feel best serves the city, best serves the future city manager. Y'all have a copy of it here to review. There was one addition, I think you all have seen it, that was recommended by the city attorney, which I concur with. If there's any questions, I would be happy to try to answer.
Are we voting on this and that, because we just gathered? Or are we going to go ahead and our next meeting?
I would hope that we had an opportunity, if everyone's had an opportunity to review it, I would hope that we took the time to at least vote on it tonight. If not, we can call a special meeting and for approval.
Is anything substantially different from the last contract, other than the obvious items that were the, as far as any of the conditions?
Other conditions, it's such things as salary, starting salaries, there's certain, certain other items that were a little bit, because of the experience and whatnot, are somewhat lower than what Mr. Zimbor had.
And also, there's a clause that says that the city manager won't get a step raise unless it's approved by the commission. Any increase in salary for city manager has to be approved by the commission prior. And then the probationary period went from 90 days to six months.
That sounds good.
And severance without call is still.
The language, the remaining language of the contract is just as Mr. Holmes drafted it before. Mr. Holmes had an opportunity to review the contract as well.
Mr. Mayor, I know this was added to the agenda item rather late, but I'd like to formally go ahead and make a motion that we add this to the agenda item so that we can expedite the contract with the new city manager.
Now, what I will tell you also, the contract doesn't commence until July 2nd, but it wouldn't, his starting date wouldn't be until July 2nd.
July 2nd, alright, Bush.
So, if the commission would like to review it additionally, then that's, it's up to the commission.
Yes, let's take care of that at our next meeting if we can, that way we will be consistent.
Okay, that's fine.
We did meet sunshine requirements for this, because we did give it out like yesterday afternoon.
So, that's, that's fine with me. Is that, is that a motion to table Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Is that a second, Commissioner, and Vice Mayor Brown? We got a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Mr. Bush, you're hereby dismissed.
Thank you very much.
You can, you can now start vacation. You can say that louder, Commissioner Norwood.
Go Gators.
Go Gators. We'll now move on to public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes, there will be no action taken on the topics of discussion. First up, Mr. Vickers.
This is your last meeting, and someone came to me and said that I should return because my presence here was missed.
It was.
Okay. First thing, part of what I want to just talk about, you have already talked about that, and that was that the probation period was six months.
Yes, sir.
And I thought there was one critical thing to the contract that you have with the city manager. And the next thing was that, I don't know if y'all have a buyout, if you have to enter the second term if you decide to get rid of them, there should be in there, there's a lot of talks in there about that. Okay, the second thing, we're going to, Commissioners and Mayor, at the end of each meeting, the mayor says to all of you, you have been promised about even things that we need to hear about, nobody has been thinking. And I think that's something that's missing here, because each of you should take time for a few minutes out of the day, a week or so, to ride through our city, to see what is need to be addressed, and discuss those things among you here in the meeting. It's like everything is fine here, it's not. We have a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and I've been discussing those things for quite some time. And I would appreciate it when you all come to meetings, that somebody would step to the fore and discuss some of the things that we need to address, and then not even discuss them, do something about it, because we got a lot of problems in the city that need to be addressed. Next thing, Mr. Holmes, you made a reputation of being a very good lawyer, and I just wanted to know one thing, how did it happen that the traffic light contract was not caught about the buyout for them? How did you ever miss that?
I didn't miss anything in the traffic light contract, I don't believe, Mr. Vickers.
No, you said that you didn't know that, you didn't see that buyout, that buyout in there.
I don't remember ever saying I didn't see anything about a buyout in there. There was always a provision in the contract that required the city to pay a certain amount of money that was based upon the capital investment of ATS if the city wanted to buy out. I don't get to make the terms of contracts, they're made by somebody else, I just get to pass on the legal form, make suggestions, and that's what I did with that contract.
Okay, as an attorney, your job is to read them and give them advice of what you think they should do, right?
That's it.
But oftentimes, you got clients that will not listen to your advice.
That's true, but the client's having to be the commissioners up here, who has to vote on the issues that he's set forth and tell you about what you think he should do and shouldn't do. Then when you stop ignoring his advice, then we don't need him anymore. But the thing is that, I remember very vividly, and I don't know if anybody's ever, Gatchis stood right here and said that we didn't have to pay one dime if we decided we want the cameras removed, but I'm the only person that remembers this.
Your time is up, and you're not the only person that remembers that. You're not the only person that remembers that, and, but that comment was made, and that comment was false.
We found this out.
And we are taking, and we, and we, I'm sure the red light cameras will be a topic of discussion in the near future, so.
Okay, and about the city of Palatka, if what we can do to make it better should be something.
We discussed it, Mr. Vickers, I don't know if you, I think you missed public comment, because public comment actually has been pretty limited, Commissioner comments have been pretty lengthy at the last few meetings, including workshops. We just had a citywide cleanup project, we had, we had a gentleman come in here and say that he, that he wanted a library in place, within five days, that was put in place. We've had, so, the concerns of the citizens are being heard, they're being met, the needs of the community are vast, and we're trying as fast as we can to address as much as we can with as little as we have, and so, we would definitely continue to address your concerns and listen to you more than three minutes.
How about concerns of the city?
But your concerns as well.
Can I say something, Mr. Vickers? I'd like to thank you, I finally have, I don't know what, call it, been talking to you long enough that you consented to be on one of our new committees, and I would look forward to working with you and you helping us to move that committee forward.
Yes, ma'am.
I can assure you that your concerns aren't gonna go in defeat. Thank you, thank you.
That's right.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? We'll now close public comment, we'll move on to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we've got item A, which is to adopt a resolution number 2015-11, that's 33, awarding a bid for one fire department medical rescue truck to Beck Ford, $45,950.69, and one fire department heavy rescue truck to Bartow Ford for $95,258 USDA grant funded Is there, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be removed? Seeing now that there are motion to accept.
Caption, is that a caption of the resolution?
Well, it's consent agenda, I can read the caption.
Alright, go ahead, that's fine.
Resolution of the city of Palatka, Florida, awarding a bid for the purchase of fire department vehicles to Beck Automotive and Bartow Ford.
So move, second. Some motion on the floor and a second, by Commissioner Norwood, is there any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carries unanimously. Number four on the agenda, appointments. Consider applicants for the Appointment to the Palatka Better Place Plan Oversight Committee to serve at the pleasure of the commission. Two applicants are one, to W. Brown and Elektra Kitchens. It's my understanding that this appointment is an appointment for, from Commissioner Campbell.
Right, Commissioner Campbell actually can't make the appointment, because it was the, each commissioner appointed someone to the committee, and the actual vacancy is in, was Commissioner Campbell's appointment.
Okay, and so, Commissioner Campbell, what's your pleasure?
I would like to appoint, I've taken into consideration both applicants. My last opportunity to appoint somebody was Mr. Elektra Kitchens, however, this time, I'm going to appoint Ms. going to appoint Ms. Wanda Brown, if she accepts to the Palatka Better Place Plan Oversight Committee.
Is it more than one spot here? Is it more than one thing, just one?
Just one spot.
Five.
There's five, but everyone's field got here.
So.
One second.
Do we, there's a, there's a, there's a motion to accept by Commissioner Norwood, there's a second by. He, he made a motion.
Oh, okay, second.
Second by Vice Mayor Brown. We got a motion to second, is there any discussion? Let me call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Welcome, Ms. Brown. Is anything, can you just stand so that you can be recognized?
Thank you very much.
And we thank you for applying, and we also thank Ms. Kitchens for applying as well. We will now move on to item, one of Supervisor of Elections' request for city elections candidacy, residency verification procedure. Mr. Overtur, please come forward for us. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Just want to take a moment to, to the new commissioners to say, you've done a good job, and it's been a pleasure working with all of you. I want to thank Betsy for her expediting the process this afternoon to give me some ideas so that I can ask you all some questions. What I'm here for first is, as your official qualifying agent, or official, I'm here just to do what you all want me to do, okay? So that's the first thing. I'm not here to tell you what to do because you all are the ones, are here to tell me, Charles, we want, I want you to do it this way. And I know that many of you, three of you were not on the board when this ordinance was passed back in December, in fact, it was after the election. And if my recollection was, it was a three to two vote, and two of the four tonight were both on the negative. So, I know it's a new issue, and so I'm just asking for some direction tonight concerning the one-year requirement as far as somebody living in the city before they're eligible to run. And I had a couple of questions, but I think the first one that I just wanted to ask was if you'll help me with an idea of the reason behind this ordinance. And I know, you know, some of you weren't here, so, but yes, sir.
I think I, I think I would be the reason behind that.
Anyway, I, I guess what I want to, what I want to mention is, I want, before you respond, I want you to think about this, and I'm going to use the Honorable Don Holmes. Don has extreme amount of experience with the city of Palatka all these years as the attorney, and has represented the town of Menloakin for thirty years. And I just want to give this example. My, my worry is, what if July first, Don decides to leave his nice place where he is out on Buffalo Bluff and moves in? If I'm reading this resolution right, Don, with all his experience, and with the idea that he would like to be a, a city commissioner with you all, is not eligible if I'm understanding what you all have passed as a group. And I just, I guess, I just want to make sure that I understand, just so we can do, in my office, we can do what needs to be done, because I think, you know, are we limiting a good candidate? And then, Mayor, since you brought it up, you would, you know, you qualified with me in April. So, if this had been enforced, you know, you as a mayor would not be, would not be possible because of, of this. So I, I just want to broadly ask that question, make sure that that's your intention, that's what you all want, and then if it is, then I need some direction about what kind of proof do you want us to use? Now, Betsy was so good to send out, and I guess you all have in your packets, you know, the requirements of some of the other cities. And the first thing you got to remember is, the cities are the only ones that have a, are doing this. County, state, all the rest of them, there is no requirements. In fact, I can give you an example of a Supreme Court case that just happened, it caused the county of Pine Ellis in Hillsborough two or three hundred thousand dollars extra because they had to have a special election. They had a candidate that was a write-in candidate. The state statute, which is in there now until the other day, stated that he had to live at the time of qualifying. A circuit judge agreed, and they kicked him off the ballot. They started to go ahead and have it, and then they appealed, he appealed it, and the District Court of Appeals said, you know what, that's unconstitutional. But it was too late, they'd already taken his name off the ballot, so they had to have an election in November. The two candidates that were there, one won, and then the US, I mean, the state, the House of Representatives did not accept the results because they said, you know, this gentleman deserved to be on that ballot. So I'm giving that example. The state, you know, is going the other direction. We've got rumors right now that the former sheriff of Jacksonville is going to come down and run for the US House race of Ron DeSantis, who's leaving to try to be the senator. So, I'm just giving that as background to help you all, and just sort of guide me as to what, what your, you know, your feelings are, and to make sure that we do what you want done, because you're, you're the ones in charge.
Well, I can take what I feel. I would like to remove the Tarahail ordinance.
I don't know. I don't know if that's the name of it.
Can I say something? Um, you know, with our city, as it grew, we didn't always bring every part into the city. And if you go out past Palm Avenue, the only way I know who is in the city and who's not is who got the green roll-up trashcan we pick up.
And that's not foolproof.
Well, I know, well, I'm saying, usually that was what we had to do for the fire department. I, I would like to see us go back to what we had in the beginning. I thought it was sufficient for us, and we do have good candidates coming up all the time. It's, it's our right to have folks come and put in. I know we look at some and we say, why in the world does they, they apply? But, it's because they have the right to do it, and I don't think that we should cut people out. Running for president and, and larger offices costs so much that it's almost cuts people off from doing it. With our cities, we are the closest people to the people, and we are the ones that have to take care of them. If we had a good candidate, I would want that candidate to, um, to be able to run.
I'm, I'm going to take, I'm going to take one comment just briefly, we got one comment card to fill out for this, and Ms. Kitchens, you can step forward.
I was on the commission to pass that ordinance. Mayor, you're a friend of mine, I can guarantee you it was not passed because of you on my part. Previous, because Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Brown has referred to previous ordinance saying you had to be arrested in the city for six months before you could go under city commission. And at some point, when some of the election laws changed, I think it was Susan McCool changed our ordinance, and we didn't realize that it had been changed that way. And then when we found out, then we wanted to fix it, and they went to one, one year instead of six months. So it was not done because of you or anybody else. I can promise you that, or my, I can't speak for anybody else, but I can speak for me, and I've talked to Mr. Holmes about it beforehand, had nothing to do with you. As a citizen of Palatka, I would be very disturbed if someone came down here from Alabama, ran for election, and got elected, and then it come back today of, of being sworn in as from a Palatka citizen. I want my representatives to be residents of the city and know what the city's about. In your case, you knew about it because you would have worked in the city, and you had a lot of good experience, but that was the only reason for it. And as for Mr. Hopeker's question, he could do it just like he do Homestead exemption. Look at the date they signed up the vote in the city. If they have not registered to vote anyplace else within a year, that would make my city resident at least more than that for Homestead, so. I just wanted you to know, there's not, nothing personal against you, you know that already, but I want it to be counted on the public record. And it was not done for that reason, it was done so that the citizens of Palatka would get someone representing them, the new Palatka, living Palatka that was part of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
But if, you know, somebody run, come in here, run outside, and people don't know them, they not going to get elected.
I, um, I, I think, um, I, I think, you know, the selfish motive would say, we're locked in, it creates additional barriers, but I, I think that it creates an additional barrier, additional barrier for the city. It also creates an additional risk as it relates to special elections, just as alluded to by Mr. Overtur. I, I can't say that I'm a proponent of it, the timing of it, I, I disagreed with it at the time that I sat in the audience and watched the ordinance be passed, and, and I think that the commission should at least have some thought as to whether the residency requirement in itself is going to be, one, do we really have the, the ability to monitor it and enforce it the way we want to? And two, is it just an inconvenience for both the Supervisor of Elections' office and also for staff to, to go through the verification process? I, I think that an individual running in an election in the city, they're not aware of the issues, you know, it will come out throughout the process. You know, just as well as anything, I, I think our citizens are very informed, they can make decisions worthy of them dealing with viable candidates.
But if I pay taxes, I want the other people sit up here with me to pay taxes too, because when I have to vote for that raise, I wanted to shake everybody up. I think that we have said our city manager needs to live in the city limit, and if you run, you should live in the city limit. I don't, I don't think that a time restriction on it is a great big thing, but I do believe for you to know your city, you need to live in it and work in it.
Question, Norwood? My question first of all is, I know this ordinance was passed in December. Can the, can the commission actually readdress this ordinance before, uh, no, before twelve months passes?
Well, and then, if you, that's why I'm here, is because I've already had three candidates to come in to actually qualify, and our year is coming up, June twenty, so that's why I was, we wanted to get on as soon as I could to say, you all just give me some direction because I need to be able to tell your candidates, you're eligible or no you're not because of this ordinance, or, or if you change it or decide to do something different. I'm just, that's why I'm here tonight, is just to say, hey, you all, please give me some direction because we've got, you know, less than a month till that year, and then how are we going to handle it?
I don't think there'd be any prohibition to you repealing the ordinance, or, well, repealing is what you'd be doing, or changing it, should you change the ordinance, so long as you don't increase the restriction. I don't think that, that at this point in time you could increase it. Well, first of all, at the time this was proposed, my research at the time, and I'm not familiar with the case you just cited, Charles, but my research at the time indicated that a year was about the max of any, of any restriction on residency that the courts were approving. Found several that they approved at a year, nothing, nothing more than a year at that time. I haven't had a chance or been asked to look at it since that time. I think that at this point you could reduce it from a year or eliminate the, you know, the prior residency altogether. I don't think you could increase it. Come more than a year.
Alright, my next question then is, did I hear right that, that the court actually threw out?
Yes, sir, they, they, it was a write-in candidate for a state representative's job in the statute, and I can't quote it, but Don probably could find it real quick, and it says in there, a write-in candidate has to be a resident at the time of qualification. And they appealed it, and the District Court of Appeals has thrown that out and said, no, we have no right to tell them, because see, all the rest of the jobs are at the time of, when you all took office, you know, that kind of thing. It's, it's, the only one that's an exception is school board member has to be in the residence, I mean, in the, the district they live in the day they qualify. All the rest of them are the day you take office or around the election. So the District Court of Appeals actually threw that out, told the court to put the man's name back on the ballot, and they, that's why they hadn't had the special election, because they said no, that part of the constitution is unconstitutional. So, they went back and asked strictly, is a write-in candidate, so I'm not trying to draw the correlation, but that's what happened in that particular case, and like I said, it cost several hundred thousand dollars because of that special election, and that's Hillsborough, Pine Ellis, in April.
I bet that distinction was between a write-in candidate and a normal candidate for the same office, if I had to bet without looking it up.
Yeah, exactly, you were exactly right, it's under the category of write-in candidate, I was just saying that that just shows maybe a little bit of preponderance on one aspect of what you all, you know, had to think about.
How, how long have we had the six-month thing in there? It's been there for?
Well, as, as Libra said, it was there originally, and then sometime in the last two, three, or four years, I guess, back when Ms. McCool was there, it got taken out completely. And so, your ordinance, when you all voted in November and December, I don't think had a time limit at all, it just said you would be a resident of the city of Palatka when you take office, and so that was when you all met and decided to go the other direction of adding a year. And Don's exactly right, the year is the most I have found in cities, you know, and, you know, that kind of thing. Some, in our county, you and one other city are the only two that have any, it just says be a resident of the city by the day of, you know, you take an office. But again, this is up to you all to decide what your direction is and what your feelings are. Any other comments?
Well, I don't necessarily like the year, and, you know, I could, I could live with the six months, or I could live with the, at the time when you take office that you have to live in the city. But, I'd rather see a person qualify, if he's going to qualify, they should already be in the city. So the six months would should take care of that. That's just my opinion.
And I'm pretty much the same way, I was one of the individuals that could have been thrown in under that, with me relocated back to Palatka, but I'm either way, but I would like to have some kind of, you know, barrier, or, I don't want to say hurdle, but some kind of barrier of proof of residency in order to qualify.
But, let me ask another question, how would you verify?
Well, and that's what I was going to talk to you about, is, and I think the mayor will tell you, but I was upfront with him when he first came in, but he addressed, and I told him, I said, Mayor, for soon to be, you know, it's not a city resident, so he had the right to give me a different address, and so I take it at his face value, I knew there was no question about it, and also, as far as, that's why I said, told Betsy back a few weeks ago, I said, you know, I just want some direction about what do you want me to use as proof? If you, Mr. Norwood, come in, I'm just going to accept it, because we look at the four quarters of the page, I don't really value what you put in it, I just accept it because, and that's the way the state statutes stay. But if you want something that says, and I know Libra mentioned about the voter registration, the only problem is, that voter registration is when I, when I originally signed up, not when I moved, because I can show you one of my pocket that shows where I live now, and it says I signed up in nineteen seventy-six, which I did, but I haven't lived there. So, so, you know, I know Betsy sent us a thing about Green Coast Springs has an ordinance, and they give somebody to sign it again. You know what, unless somebody can enforce it, nobody, you know, it's, to me, it's paperwork, you know, if you all accept it, that's fine, we'll do that.
So just for point of clarification, on your end, it will require a little bit more work, work on your end?
Well, no, not really, if, if you all decide to stay with that, and, and, you know, she comes up, or you all come up with a, something you want the candidate to sign, we'll hand it to them.
I think generally when you look at, um, proof of residency, it's generally like your driver's license, your water bill, gas bill, your lease mortgage, or something of that nature. So those are things that will be taken into consideration as far as proof of residency. I don't, again, you can say that you live somewhere and have it signed as a, you know, affidavit signed, but it doesn't necessarily say that you're li, that you live there. But again, I'm one of those people, I can go either way, but I don't want to put any more, because I've been in the office when you all were under that time crunch, and I've seen the stress level that you all have, and I would not want to put that burden on you all, but again, listening to the concerns of the citizens, again, we, I mean, we have to take that into consideration as well.
Exactly, and the other thing I was going to say was, we, when you come in and turn that paper in, what I look at is the address that you put on there, and as long as it comes up that you're in the city of Palatka, that's the end of it. I don't go question, and that's what my point is, I don't question just if I live there, you see, that kind of thing. I just know that that city residence address is in the city, and that's what we base it on, and that's how we did with, with you and any other candidates, you know, type deal, so.
Betsy Digger, city clerk, I did the research on this, and I'm not advocating for one position or the other, but out of the cities that I did contact who had the same types of requirements, there are three methods that are the most popular. One is just a signature on the oath of candidate, and you've got an example of that in your package, which is nothing more and nothing, nothing more than what a normal candidate fills out because it states that you read the laws, you know, governing elections in the state of Florida, and you agree that, you know, that you qualify to run on this ballot. And it is as he said, the state doesn't ask its supervisors of elections to look any further than the four quarters of the page, in other words, they just take the person's word for it. Other municipalities simply, they look at the address on the voter registration card, and if the address on the voter registration card doesn't match the address on the oath of candidacy or any other qualified papers, is up to the supervisor of elections to verify which address is a current address, and they look no further than that. There are other cities who do have a separate oath that they signed stating that this is their name, and I provided Green Coast Springs for you, and I, I tried to provide a lot of the North Florida examples that I found, from all the cities in North Florida, or not all of them, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of them that do have the disrequirement, and they simply have a separate oath that states that their name is this, and this is their address, and they, they, you know, swear that they've lived there for at least a year, and it's no risk. And if someone wants to dispute it, they can dispute it through the normal channels that they do, which would be to file a complaint to the state. that they do, uh, which would be to, um, file a complaint to the state.
Yeah, and then usually it's another candidate's.
So that, that's what I came up with. Like I said, I just wanted to explain what they do and those seem to be the three most, um, the one thing, yeah, they're, they're the most common methods. And so there's either nothing that you do, you just take the oath of candidacy at its face value, or you simply look at the voter registration card or you have to sign that extra visa back.
Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Drager. Any other comments?
Uh, let's see, this, is this on the agenda tonight to?
For clarification.
Clarification. If, can we have this on the agenda to take action on this at the next meeting? Can we take act, action tonight because it's on the agenda?
You can't take action tonight.
Okay. I'd like to move that we, uh, uh, we rescind the current ordinance, uh, that stays, uh, twelve months or one year, rescind it back to six months and use the voter registration card for verification. Yes, uh, the date.
If you want to second that, we can discuss it, but I just wanted to make a suggestion that you just simply ask me to bring an ordinance forward, changing from one year to six months.
Right, yes.
And to bring it to the exam.
I was actually going to suggest that.
Right. Because there's a whole lot more to that ordinance than just that one.
So there's a motion to reduce the ordinance to reduce the time for residency from one year to six months. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I believe the supervisor of elections is looking for direction on how he goes to verify residency.
Yes, just voter registration card. It was a motion for voter registration card to be the method of verification.
Okay, but you understand, just like I said, I've moved, but my registration still says nineteen seventy-seven, so I just want to make sure that.
Well, they were still signing, they're still going to sign out the residency as well.
Right, right. I mean, and the address, just like you gave me that day shows in the city, so I will accept it that way. I just won't, I guess I won't have any knowledge. Mayor, did you live there that month, six months before? You see, that's where it comes back to that point where I did, and just leave some direction about what you want me to use.
I think, um, we'll be meeting again prior to the actual, um, twenty, uh, the twentieth. If it's going to be on the next agenda, I mean, if it's going to be on the, is it going to be on the next meeting? Um, if that's the case, we'll be able to provide you that clarification of what you need and it'll fit within that six months.
Right, I just want to make sure whatever you decide we do it before the year gets here so that we don't eliminate somebody that, you know, just because they didn't, you know, that kind of thing.
Do you have any suggestions? You know, your people in your office and you all have this thing going all the time. Do you have any suggestions?
No, Mayor, because see, in all the other positions, there is no time limit. You know, you can, you can come down tomorrow and run for sheriff, you know, or you can come down and run for county commissioner or, you see, there's not, as long as you're a resident of our county, there's not a time limit. That's why these are the more restrictive because then, fine, how do I know, Mayor, are you really living there? You know, that kind of thing. And that's what makes it hard for any office. And Betsy's right, there's other places that do it. Uh, she mentioned the oath of office, but the oath of office, uh, form is, is county. It doesn't even mention the city. So then I would question if somebody wanted to take it to court and you signed it, well, you can't get me in trouble because it said, it doesn't say the city, so, so, and that's a county form, you know, that she's mentioning, but there's other places that do it. But, you know, it's, it's a gray area unfortunately, just because of the fact that, that it's hard to put a time limit on it and that you live there all six months. You know, you see those kind of things, I, and we just, I don't think we need it.
But your office can verify whether a person is a registered voter at a city address within a hundred eighty-day period.
Well, I mean, we can, we can go back and look and see if you've changed it so I can verify it that way. Yes, we can do that. So if that's what you decide you want to do completely, then we can do it, yeah. It's just, again, you decide exactly how you want us to handle it for you.
Okay, well, we definitely thank you for coming in. Moving on to item six, a resolution awarding a bid to finance, uh, lease purchase of a sanitation truck and police department administrative vehicles to U.S. Bank Corp. and authorizing the mayor and interim city manager to execute in a test of lease purchase agreement, uh, and all other documents in connection thereof.
A resolution in the city of Palaca, Florida authorizing the execution and delivery of a tax exempt lease purchase agreement related to commencing different other matters in connection therewith.
So move.
Second.
We've got one, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. We have a, we got Art Leary from AmerisBank who's filled out a comment card. Mr. Leary, can you come forward for us?
Thank y'all for having me. Um, I've sent, uh, everyone a female. I don't know if you got a chance to, to see it, um, and look at the points I was making on there. And I don't know if I'm here too late after motion and a second or how y'all will act on that. My, uh, my reason for being here, of course, is that, uh, we were not the lowest bidder, of course, but, uh, the, the difference in, uh, the lowest bid to the highest bid, uh, over the term of the, uh, projected loan is about less than sixteen dollars a month. So with the relationship that AmerisBank already has, AmerisBank formerly Prosperity Bank, uh, we've, we've dealt with the city since before two thousand and one, uh, when this location was actually sunburst, I believe.
I think.
With all the things that, that we do and are involved in, I just wanted to encourage you all to, uh, if, if it's possible, uh, to, to try to get with someone local. And I know we were the only local institution. Um, and I say local, we, we maintain offices here, uh, in the city. And, uh, I'm not sure why the others don't bid. I don't know if they're not interested or if the dollar amounts aren't high enough, whatever the case might be. But we do provide all the general banking services for the city. Uh, not only do we do that, the volunteerism of, of myself and, and our staff in both our offices in a number of different events, uh, the sponsorships that we've provided through the years for different city functions or city sponsored functions, uh, I think would, would well eclipse sixteen dollars a month in difference. Um, and, uh, I'd even be willing to bring you a check from me personally for sixty a month. So, uh, uh, we just want to service the city as, as they are one of our biggest customers here, uh, for us. And we have all local people in our offices, uh, everyone there, uh, several of them, including myself, born and raised here in the city. I was raised, you know, five blocks from here. Um, you know, we, we could have gone to Jacksonville, game to other places to work, but we decided to stay here, raise our families and be involved. Uh, so I, I was just hoping and urging you all, and if you didn't, if you didn't get that email, I have copies if you need one. Um, I know Ms. Commissioner Brown, uh, I gave her one today, but, uh, she tells me she has sight problems, so I had to read her a little bit to her anyway. But I would, I would just implore you guys as much as you can to try to do business locally. Uh, many of us do, uh, I was raised that way, uh, you know, go to the local store rather than going to the, the large store. And, uh, we can't, the, the, the problem comes in with, with bidding on some of these projects in the race is that, uh, AmerisBank is not the size of these other guys. Uh, and they have a lot bigger resources to draw from and they're actually getting rates somehow that are, that are lower than, uh, much lower than, than we could ever offer, uh, just due to, uh, our size and, and our resources. Uh, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that and, uh, and thank y'all for, you know, giving me the opportunity to come here and kind of, kind of plead our case. Um, again, we do appreciate the city's business and we have a good relationship with Matt and staff here and they know at any time, if they have any questions or concerns, they can, they can contact us and, uh, we respond typically the right way. Uh, we're often in here just walking in, checking in, um, dealing with these other larger, larger places. Nothing against them, I don't, I don't want to bash other businesses, but, uh, I don't know how much local involvement you would get out of these other guys, other than just handing them your money.
Mayor, may I give y'all a history now?
Please.
Um, back when the Chevrolet place was owned by Mr. Williams, some of you all may not remember it, he came into us very upset with the city because we had been purchasing our cars from somewhere else. And in doing that, it brought to the attention that sometime if we don't take care of home first, nobody else is going to do it for us. At that time, I don't remember which commissioner it was, we looked at it and we asked staff to look at the lower bid, but if the bid from someone in the city was close to it, please consider doing the business at home. And we need every dollar we can to stay in this town and, and float around because he's paying people who live here and work here. And I just want to bring it to your attention, you all are new and we don't think about this all the time, just that we go for the lowest bid. And I know we need to help the city, but our citizens are the city. But I, I want to bring that to your attention. I'd like to say, is it possible for us to put the bid back out or since we haven't awarded it?
That's, it's, it's possible. Uh, I, I think this is, this is going out twice already. Uh, Mr. Holmes, can you kind of chime in a little bit for me?
Yeah, I think your bid requirement is lowest and best. Um, and I, I don't believe that, uh, and I, and I haven't studied all nuances of the two bids. Uh, remember Matt addressed it, I believe you addressed it at a staff meeting briefly. Um, and, uh, my recollection was they were close in all terms with the exception of a small difference in the payment, if I'm not correct.
Correct, that's correct.
Matt Reynolds, Finance Director. That, that is correct. There should be a sheet in your packet that shows the three bids and shows a comparison of what the total repayment amount would be with principal and interest over the seven year term. And it's, uh, thirteen hundred dollars over seven years.
So, so in my opinion, um, I, I don't, I understand the ranking and I sort of take no issue with the ranking at all. Uh, I don't believe that it would be a substantial deviation to go to, uh, a bid that was as close a bid as this one is. You do business with Ameris?
We do, we do all of our normal.
So, I mean, I think you have, uh, another factor, uh, an extenuating circumstance, if you will, or an additional factor in that you have a business relationship with Ameris. Uh, I don't even think it's wrong to take into account the fact that they may, they do participate, uh, you know, in, in the local scene. So in my opinion, you would not be doing anything illegal should you choose the, the Ameris bid, given the very minor distinction and the founders did Matt correctly before, there were no other terms that were substantially different, nothing more onerous in the Ameris bid than the other, other bid, except the thirteen or sixteen dollar a month difference in payment. So whether you choose to or not, obviously I'm not trying to make that, uh, statement, but should you choose to, uh, I, I don't believe that you would be doing anything unlawful.
Mr. Norwood?
With this being grant money that we're, grant funds that we're actually using here, is there anything that prohibits us, uh, from going to a, anyone other than the lowest bid?
The, these vehicles, the police vehicles, the sanitation truck, we're not receiving any grant money for those. The, the fire trucks, we are receiving a fifty percent match and we're, we're going to be looking at doing financing for the city's fifty percent share of that as well, but that's going to be coming up, uh, you know, over the next probably five or six months. So there's, there's no, no grant, grant money involved with these, so, uh, there's no external stipulations.
Fire trucks, I mean, that'd be sanitation trucks.
It's a fifty percent match.
Not for the sanitation truck.
Okay, it's a fifty percent match, but what, what do you fifty percent?
Fire trucks. Fire trucks. So you're awarded the bid for that tonight. However, that's just awarding the bid. They have to be billed and delivered, which is five or six months from now. So this, this financing does not have anything to do with the.
All right, okay.
So do we, do we vote the other down and then make another motion?
You don't, actually, you don't have to vote it down.
Okay.
You can withdraw your vote.
Who did the motion?
I did. I can withdraw it.
Okay, the motion withdrawn.
Is there another motion?
I have, I'd like to make the motion that we go with AmerisBank, um, and.
Ameris.
AmerisBank.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
And the basis for that motion would be that you believe that the Ameris bid is not technically the lowest, but all factors considered is the best bid?
Yes, for the city of Palaca.
Question? There's a motion on the floor. Questions being called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, can I say this, Mayor, that we need to think about, uh, telling our staff as we go out for bids, to please put in their minds that we would like to do business within the boundaries of the city of Palaca with the people who do business here, if it's any way possible.
Can we, can we include in our bid's proximity, uh, as a factor?
I know we.
Can we ask him, yeah, can we? Is there, can you have a local preference?
Local, uh, local preference ordinances are permissible as long as there are bounds, um, and.
Some sort of criteria.
Right, criteria and bounds on, you know, how far you can deviate from a low bid to work with a local bidder. We, I would not be prepared at this time to tell you all of those factors, but in general, yes, you can do a local preference.
Do you want to have a look into it and bring something back to us so that we'll be able to do it?
I don't think we necessarily could do that. We can look into it and, I mean, if we find ourselves in an, in an op, opportunity in the future for something to explore, then we can actually try to look at that and bring them, the proposal forward.
Okay.
We did adopt a local option and purchasing policy five years ago.
I know we did.
Mr. Mayor, we can, we can look that ordinance up and see what's in it and, and we can have that discussion offline.
Let's just, yeah, we, let's discuss it during budgeting. So we'll, we'll do it at a different time.
So bring your sixteen.
Let's move on to, we're going now in a public hearing.
I just want to mention one thing, the, uh, the local preference, I heard large legislature is toying with an idea of removing that for local communities, so it's something that we might want to look a little closer at.
You might need to talk to us so that we can see what the legal cities is doing and if you can help us do it.
We'll now move on to item number seven, we're going to a public hearing. Uh, item number seven on the agenda is an ordinance admitting municipal code, section ten dash six to allow alcohol consumption in the River Center and in the River Park buildings with proper approval and permissions, is the second reading. Ms. Drager?
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida adding the St. John's River Center and buildings on the grounds of River Park to the list of buildings incented from an alcohol consumption and serving ban, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell.
Sir.
There's a second by Commissioner Norwood. We'll now open the floor. Public hearing. Ms. Kitchen says to fill out a card for public hearing on this item. Please come forward.
Good evening again, I'm Libra Kitchens, ten twenty-seven South 12th Fleet. And my questions are probably for the city attorney, uh, at least some of them will be, uh, on, is this going to, and it says River Park Buildings plural, so this indicates it is going to be one of the building on the River Park. Will future buildings still be subject to having to get a conditional use if they're within three hundred acres of a religious institution, another alcohol serving, uh, institution or a church or daycare or school or daycare? Or will this, does this get rid of the provision that says that they have to have conditional use for the, in those three, uh, the, the church, the school or the, uh, other alcohol serving establishment?
I think all this does is make the city-owned buildings eligible for consumption of alcohol. I don't think it was intended to abrogate any of the distance requirements that are set forth in your current alcohol ordinance.
Okay, uh, that takes care of part of the other question involves the GP building. Uh, unless the GP building is planned to be a, a twenty-four seven party time after the kids aren't there, then I don't see why it should be included because for special events, they, you come to the city permission of a special events permit, you get permission to serve alcohol in the streets on the sidewalk. So why move back to the GP building, pardon me, the River Center? Uh, why wouldn't that fall into a special event? So if they want to have a special party up on the roof or inside, why wouldn't they come and just get a special event, A, B, A, B or C event and get the alcohol permission that way instead of have it twenty-four seven or they can do it anytime, basically?
That was the same question that we addressed last time, right?
I do not remember that. It might have, lots happened between now and then. It might have, lots happened between now and then.
It was the same thing that we addressed last time.
Well, regression on the memory, please, I don't remember.
Well, well, right now, your ordinance prohibits the consumption of alcohol on specified city buildings, um, and it doesn't provide an exception for a special event permit.
Okay, but the exception, it also prohibits them parks and public streets too, but, and but they can get a special event for that, but they can't for the building, is that the reason?
Um.
I was just curious, it's no big super deal, you know.
I don't know about us allowing consumption of alcohol in all public parks.
When we allow Luke Grant to do that, we sustain the alcohol, alcohol ordinance, so they can serve, consume and serve alcohol from the riverfront all the way up to, uh, I think the last time it was Sixth Street and from Laurel to Lead, we did the same thing to the Mud Race, we let them go over the entire river park. So I was just curious why the GP and the river center would be different. But if it is that's fine, I have no problem, I was just curious.
Well, I, I, I understand your point. Your point is you ought to be able to, we ought to, and maybe we should, maybe we should technically accept ordinance also and, and allow the city commission the freedom to allow consumption of alcohol in, in all public parks and in the public buildings, um, you know, by, by application. Uh, the only public parks that I'm familiar with as allowing consumption of alcohol in would be the, the park at the end of the city, the boat ramp. Um, so your point may, may be well taken. The ordinance states it shall be unlawful for any person to consume or have in their possession any alcoholic beverage in any public parks or recreation area or on any public school property or with any public building. And then it accepts, uh, what it says it shall not apply to Ravine Gardens, State Park, Riverfront Park. So it's already there, Riverfront Park's already there. It's already accepted, uh, as part of this ordinance, you're accepting Riverfront Park. Um, so.
Okay, but.
But that's accomplished.
I would like to see the GP, the river center be removed from it, because it is, it's, its purpose is a, a children's educational center. And then if somebody wants to run it out for a private party or a public party, then come to the commission and do a special events thing, and that's all we have.
What's your question? Is that not somewhat the same with the Ravine Garden?
Similar function. Is there any, we're not closed, public comment, public hearing. Public hearing being closed, is there, we'll call the question. Roll call, please.
He had, he asked a question and did I give you answer?
No, he, I already.
Huh?
What's your question? You, you need, you need clarification?
Yeah, just, what did you ask him?
No, I just asked, was it not really the same function as Ravine Gardens and their educational?
It's the same, Ravine Gardens is the same thing, I mean, Ravine Garden's a public park, but also has that same function, based upon my understanding of, of what the function is of Ravine Garden.
And if I understand your point is there may be children present at Ravine Gardens